Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting Monday, March 5th, 2018 approximately 7:05. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, non-lethal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I announced a rabies clinic on Saturday, May 19th at the Millville Police Station. Kitty cats scheduled for between 9:00 and 10:00, and log hours between 10:00 and noon. Don't confuse that.
That could be a problem.
That could be a problem.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank the Vice Chairwoman for bringing it to my attention about the fact that in the past there had been one in with, you know, I think we had a hiatus in between. And so I want to give kudos to the Animal Control Officer, Kevin Sullivan, for working to get Mendon Animal Clinic, who's going to sponsor it for $15 a pet. And some people, it may mean, you know, they don't have to drive a long distance. And I also know that Kevin is working to try to broaden this, to do some other things on that day that might be helpful for people looking to be responsible pet owners and also have some resources there. So I'd stay tuned and as he kind of pulls in some other potential people to be there for both educational and potentially for other reasons that pet owners might find interesting, I think it'll be good. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. Item two on the announcements, we have the announcement that Dr. Jason DeFalco will be beginning his tenure at the Blackstone Regional School District Superintendent. Our agenda indicated April 1st, I mean August 1st.
Right, but it's July 1st, 2008. Yes, sorry about that.
If I can find it. I'm here, but I can't find it.
Next is minutes. We have the minutes from February 20th, 2018, February 5th, 2018. It was an executive session, December 4th, 2018. I've been through the minutes. I really don't have any comments. I want to take a motion.
I have two things. For the minutes of February 20th, 2018, first thing was that when I, before we voted, I recommended that we have a special town meeting and a regular town meeting on the same day. So that's when I said that, not afterwards. And also, it was excluded that my comments about why I felt this was unnecessary to have this special town meeting and why I voted no on it. So I'd like those put in the minutes to record what I felt on that motion, on that topic.
That one's prior. I don't think, because they didn't have Roland or my comments in here.
Right.
I think it was just because it was discussion, you know, conversing. So I think if you want, I think we've talked about this before, but if you want it.
If you descend from a vote, you're usually recorded so that there's a reason why you voted no on it. That's just a common courtesy.
You could, I think what you need to do is say, I would like it stated, I would like to state for the record. And that indicates to have it recorded in the notes.
Okay, well, I did say why I was explaining myself. So that was, I think, is needed because there is comments of every other citizen afterwards. But what I said about a special town meeting was completely excluded.
Well, no, it's not just you alone. I mean, Roland made comments as well.
Yeah, but that was to my, the point I was bringing up. It was all in the discussion. That is not, he wasn't saying it as a specific point.
I can bring it up to Amy, to go back. I mean, she listened to the messages. You know, I think we try to capture things that the residents say because, you know, it's unusual to have the resident come forward. But again, it's, you know, it's interpretation. And I think the vote stands for what it is. And if I, if I could tell you how many votes I took in my life and how there's no recording of what I might have said before or after, it's, that's just, you know, you get the airtime here. I mean, unless everybody wants exactly what they said.
No, but these, these are the official records and it should state why I voted no on it.
We've heard that before. I know they're the official record.
So.
But, you know, if you really want something, you know, maybe, maybe you become the secretary and write it and then see if the rest of the Board of Selectmen would like to entertain it.
Going forward, if we just do like Jennifer suggests is that, just say for the record.
Say for the record, sure.
Because it doesn't show who the descending vote is.
Right.
It just says a four to one vote.
Yeah, but, okay.
So you could say.
I did make the point of explaining why I voted no on it, so.
But I think everybody sometimes talks afterwards. So I think you need, if you want it in the record, I think it should be clearly stated. I would, you know, for the record, please reflect that this is the reason why I voted against it.
I think we heard that. We heard that. We heard the conversation and, you know.
They can add that.
It's actually filmed as well, so, you know, and I know you're going to say, we're not the official record. But your interpretation of what the official record is, you know, if the, if the board wants to vote a certain way to do that and start creating that, then I don't care. I really don't. I mean, to me, I think the gist of it was a long meeting. I think there was a lot covered. I give credit to Amy for deciphering that and, you know, I thought they were pretty accurate. But, you know, that's like me trying to tell a reporter what to put in the newspaper. You know, they, they look at the vote, they don't necessarily record everything that someone says or, or put in.
So I'll make, I'll make the motion to accept the 20th by, but with the.
Well, there's just one typo, that's all.
Oh, which one?
Not a huge one, but just. Under the public forum, when Ron Marcus came.
Yep.
She has Roland Marcus.
Oh, really?
Everybody does that, though. I get Bill's Ron Barrett.
Yes, you're right.
And he probably gets Bill's Roland.
Thank you, I didn't see that.
He can have my bills, but.
There you go.
So I make a motion to accept the February 20th with the correction of Mr. Marcus' name by moving the first paragraph on the fourth page to, prior to the vote, and then include a sentence for Mr. Alwards' position.
Rule.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the meeting minutes for the executive session on February 5th. I'll hear a motion to accept them. Those minutes. So moved. Aye.
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 Minutes of December 4th, 2017. Executive session.
It's an open session.
Open session, yes. I don't hear a motion to accept it. Accept the minutes. So move.
The second.
Rule.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Departments of Boards, oh, Department slash Board. Town Clerk announces that the last day to register the vote is March 13th. The second item is from the Treasurer Collector indicating that 2018 excise bills were mailed on February 27th and due by honor before March 29th.
Of course, today was a very busy day because people had gotten that notification along with another mailing, which we'll talk about afterwards, around the same time.
Public Forum. Correspondence.
You're the only one for public forums.
You're allowed to come up at Department of Boards, too.
It's okay.
Correspondence, the first item on the correspondence is the MMA Legislative Records Meetings for May, March 9th and 16th. There was one on March 2nd, but we buy that date. And it's a good opportunity for, Jennifer and I attended one last year for RARMing. It's an opportunity for town government officials to attend and listen to the state legislators and hear a little something about the governor's budget. So on March 9th, it'll be at the Hudson Town Hall Auditorium, 78 Main Street, and then Newburyport City Hall Auditorium, 60 Pleasant Street. Then on March 16th, it'll be in Gardner, Levee, Hayward Memorial Library at 55 West Lynn Street, and Pittsfield City Hall, City Council Chamber is on 70 Allen Street. Registration is required to get a breakfast. Next, we have the State Mosquito Control Board. And basically, this is, happens annually here. Fiscal 19, 2019 Budget Notification of Compliance and Certification Policy of Mosquito Control. And that, that'd be a good idea. We have a wet season, West Nile virus, and so I would encourage supporting that. Do we need a vote on that to respond by?
No, I think it's their actually putting together what their cherry sheet assessments would be for each town. And for the town of Millville, it gives the total assessment of about $14,118. And the amount that the control board contributes towards that is about $565. But again, it represents about 0.6% over the overall budget. So it's their way of notifying us as a community that participates. And I know that a lot of residents asked about that last year, especially in light of the gypsy moth. Everybody was wondering, we were getting sprayed for that as well, but this is something completely separate. We haven't gotten a gypsy moth control board, per se, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Trucees. But after going through what we went through last year and the year before, I'm wondering if, you know, we've through the worst of it. Hopefully, we are.
The next correspondence is from Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources. And it's pursuant to the Right-of-Wake Management Regulations 333 Commonwealth of Massachusetts Regulation 11, in order to apply pesticides to controlled vegetation to maintain rights of way. The department will be applying pesticides along the, along the roadways and power lines. That's something that's normally done every year as well. So, but the, if there's, if there are any objections or questions regarding that, there will be public hearings Monday, February 26th at the Wareham Town Hall, Room 27, Third Floor, 57 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM. And then again on Tuesday, February 27th, 2018, at UMass Walton Field Station, Third Floor Conference Room at 2:40 Beaver Street, Walton, Massachusetts, from 11:00 to 12:30.
I'll make sure to put it on the website, too, in case any residents want to go and
New business. First item is special town meeting. I'll be looking for a vote to open a warrant for a special town meeting and then a date to close that warrant. We've already arrived at a date of April 30th for a special town meeting. So I would suggest that perhaps that we look at opening the warrant this evening and perhaps on March, I'm sorry, April 2nd, to close it and have a public hearing at that same time. It would be our first select board meeting.
So it would be April 3rd. Because it will fall on a Tuesday due to the election on Monday evening.
Right.
I'll be busy that night.
Okay.
Well, if you would just close the warrant, you could do that and then have.
A public hearing, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would make more sense. But unless you guys, I mean, to me, we've got a limited number of things that we want to put on there to begin with. So even if you left it open for the next meeting in March or the 3rd, you know, we could still meet, I think, the deadline, let me look back and see, 1, 2, for that week, yeah. I mean, we could have the, the public hearing the following week as long as it's posted by the 16th.
Yeah.
So what I'm saying is if we officially close the warrant at the end, you know, of the next meeting in March.
19.
The 19th, then we can prep the actual warrant so that by the 3rd, we can have it. As opposed to waiting to close the warrant on the 3rd. I think that's a little bit later.
Too late. Yeah, because we actually, the 16th is a holiday.
There you go.
So you're going to have to really post it on the 12th or the 13th.
Mm-hmm. So that's what I would recommend. If, so if we did March 19th as the day to close the warrant, that gives us enough time. And like Jen says, we can then make sure it's posted in advance before the 16th.
We don't have to schedule the public hearing.
Well, it's, it's a.
In conjunction with.
It's not that we have to schedule, it would be, usually, we would schedule the hearing with, for the Finance Committee. But for a special town meeting, it's not, as far as, I was talking with Town Council, we don't have a regular article in our bylaw that says you have to have it for seven days before or anything. You would have to actually.
Finance does.
Right, right.
Not this far.
But for a regular annual town meeting, but not necessarily. And I said to Joe that I thought I wanted to keep up that practice, yeah.
They have one for special town meetings.
I'm not saying you don't, but it's not necessarily in the bylaw that says that. And I asked Town Council about whether there was, I'll have to look a little bit more closely, but I asked them to look as well. And regardless, we were going to have one anyway. We want to have one. And we're going to have other, you know, community meetings prior to that. So I say the earlier that we close the warrant, the sooner we can get the warrant drafted and then the sooner we can have the public hearing, which is, you know, we don't, the Finance Committee would set their public hearing, but we usually want it at least so many days before, you know, actually posting it.
Even if there's no financial articles?
Well, it depends. We don't know, there is a financial article.
Oh, right.
Yes, a financial article. And then, sorry, I didn't mean to laugh about that. I know we're all dieted from, we haven't done a lot of work on stuff. There's that, and there could be even the potential for one of the marijuana articles, which would have potential implications financially. So I would just pen it in as something we definitely would need you guys to weigh in on.
So are we, I just want to understand, are we only doing the FinCom as a public hearing? Are we doing another information site in the evening for the general public? Or is it all kind of one? What is the thought?
No, I think we have, we have until the 30th, you know, prior to that. So I think we do the normal business of, you know, closing the warrant, you know, setting the warrant and you guys finalizing it and then posting it. And then during that time period of once you finalize the warrant, you know, we can, you know, I'm already planning to have, you know, informational sessions, whether you want to be hosted by the Board of Selectmen or hosted as a community forum with the relevant partners who are doing the financing within this community and the assessor and things like that. I think that would be a much healthier dialogue to be able to answer those concrete questions people have.
No, I agree.
As opposed to, you know, having the Board of Selectmen. I think you've done the right thing. You've set the, the public hearing. I think you should definitely be part of a community forums that we have. But as far as the official part of it, I think you do that part of opens and closing and approving the warrant and getting it posted and then participating and let us set up a couple of time periods.
So my, my second or third, I don't even know which one, would be those, that public session with the accountants, where everyone's getting their information, they're getting it, you know, from the people who know that information, who's prepared it. I suggest that we have the school available for that. I think, I don't want to have here or at the senior center and then have a large crowd and not be able to accommodate and feel like the, I'd rather have an empty auditorium to plan for the most people coming versus a smaller venue and people being upset about not being able to come in. So I, I'm just putting it out there that I think it should be held at the auditorium.
At the Millville one.
Yeah.
I got another curveball. A few people approached me, and I never thought of it. March 30th is Good Friday. A lot of people leave for the long weekend to spend with their families for Easter. Attendance may be down on that Friday. Is it possible to do it for the 29th?
We're talking April.
April 30th, you mean? Not March.
Oh, yeah.
I was going to say, it's on a Monday night.
Yeah, I'm on the wrong. See, I'm all screwed up on this holiday.
That's all right.
It's so early this year.
I know. Listen, we're going to have a foot of snow on the ground Wednesday. Don't feel bad.
It's on a Monday, it's on a Monday night.
Monday night.
Okay.
It's the okay Monday.
So we're open on April 30th.
So we're okay on the April 30th. We're, I think we're, we might be okay on the.
You're the only one there on March 30th.
March, yeah, but Roland will be.
Halfway hit 52, things start going downhill, I guess.
Got a long way to go.
Wait.
Wait, oh, thanks, Joe. Thank you.
All right.
All right, so.
And then, vote to close the warrant for the 9th.
Right, I think we close the warrant on the 9th. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can we do this in one motion?
Yeah, I think you could do it in one motion.
So I make a motion to open the warrant this evening for the April 30th special town meeting.
Not March 30th.
Right. And with a, in a closing date of March 19th to close the warrant.
I'll second that.
Rule.
Aye.
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 I'll scroll to the right month. I'll scroll to the right month next time I'm looking at the date.
Okay, there you go. And that will give us time that's better because by doing that gives us more time during the month of April to, to schedule a good one. And I will, I'll reach out to the, the school committee as well as to make sure that we have the auditorium.
It's actually on their webpage.
I've already connected with them for both of this. I've talked with Priscilla. So they, we have the actual two dates for the meetings, but not for this community meeting yet. So I think that's a good recommendation. I'll do that tomorrow.
Y'all come to Town Hall and notice a quilt out by the reception area. It's, it's, they're celebrating the centennial. And it's sewn onto one of the eight sister towns to Mendon. It was used for the centennial. So the board and the town administrator would like to thank Lois Salome for donating, needing that quilt to the town.
I'd put it before the board because just like any donation that I think is valuable to the town, usually we would have a vote of the town to accept the quilt. And even though it was, it was actually, I think, initially going to go up to the school and for whatever reason it wound up here, which is great. I told Lois we appreciate it. And so if we can just have a vote to accept the donation on behalf of Lois so that it is.
Motion.
Part of the community forever and ever.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation of the centennial quilt from Lois Salome.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
Aye.
May I ask a question? Is that new quilt the same size as that quilt?
No.
No.
It's not here.
Looks like a map.
Oh, okay. So it's still displayable?
Yes.
Still displayable, okay.
But not to replace that one?
No.
No. Next is Department of Revenue and D E S E Joint Meeting for the Board of Selectmen in the Blackstone Millville School District, an update.
And Mr. Chairman, I know that it was mentioned in the last meeting about possibly trying to see if we could, maybe it would make sense for both the Board of Selectmen to also meet with the school board and maybe have, you know, some people from the state. We have done some outreach, both the Finance Director and myself, with the Department of Revenue. I know that they have reached over from the Division of Local Services over to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I think their feeling is right now that they're working through trying to contact on the educational side, their representatives. And I know that that's what we're doing on the Department of Revenue side. One of the things that came up, and I think we talked about this, is that the school board is, got a meeting that's coming on the 8th, on the Thursday.
Seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock. That they're going to be reviewing their, their budget. And I think one of the things that, when I discussed with the Department of Revenue, you know, in 2016, we had the technical report that you commissioned before I came in and that looked at a number of things. And I had spoken with the D O R representatives about maybe it being a good idea since we've done so many things that I think are very positive for this community that relate to this whole reason why we're also still in the, in a pathway to have an actual special town meeting, that it might be good to have them revisit where they think we're at in complying with some of these recommendations and where they also can assess where we're at financially with these, with our three-year projection. I think it would go a long way to helping the public understand this is not something that is being made in a vacuum by just a handful of people and that this board and the Finance Committee have been doing their due diligence on making sure that going forward, we have faith in the, both the direction that we've taken for improving our financial management practices, but more importantly, have faith also in the projections that we're putting together. So one of the things that I know we've left a message and I'm hoping to hear this week that potentially maybe at the very beginning of April, at that first meeting in the first part of April, that there's a potential that maybe we can have them come after having done another assessment. Have them come in, assess what we're doing right now. I think it would lend confidence into the position that the community has taken leadership-wise for wanting to set a special town meeting and to get another perspective. I mean, at the end of the day, we want to have faith in those kinds of positions that we've taken, that we've talked about this being a revenue shortfall. We've talked about it having a number of reasons why we've arrived to this point. So I think it would be helpful that they give us a report. And, you know, they, they still want the community to determine itself locally, and I respect that as well. But I also know that they've been a great help in trying to make sure that the direction going forward is the right direction. So as far as the joint meeting together, I think that the, the representative for the school side, I'm talking about at the state level, is working with them and will continue to try to enlighten them about the position that we've shared those numbers with the state so they know our position. There's nothing to hide here. The more they know and understand the position, the better. And I do know that they're going to be reaching out with them. And I think once we have this, perhaps with the D O R coming in potentially as early as maybe the 3rd of April, that gives us still time to meet with the two and hopefully come together. And I would, I would hope that that would happen. And in the meantime, you know, I would just say that if I can try to pull that together before or for the April 3rd meeting, that's what I'd like to be able to do and have the D O R come in and address the board about their findings and what you've done already and where we are now and, yeah. So I think that makes sense.
Just the impact on, on this is, I, from what I understand, the budget that'll be presented for a hearing on Thursday evening is the 8.4% increase. And that equates to Millville approximately 525. And that equates to Millville approximately $525,000.
It's only one, five forty-six is what I heard.
Yeah, it's over $500,000. And to put some reality to this, our levy increase is limited to approximately $125,000. And with little new growth, maybe another 10 grand. So that's, there's quite a spread there.
So their public hearing is the same budget that they showed us before that hasn't been cut or anything? Because that was my understanding, that that first budget was kind of their hopes and dreams and that they were trimming. So I guess attending the public hearing will be important.
It will be.
I have it in my calendar, but I'm not sure. I'm gonna be late because I have Girl Scouts.
This is what I got. It was attached to the notification.
Oh.
There it is.
Or did they attach what they're gonna be presenting as a budget that day?
February 27th, notice of public hearing. Yeah. Line item N...
Yeah, it's all there.
Oh, so it's just, just the top level and then they end it. Add-ons? Yeah, so it is the same. That's disappointing. That's not what I, how I took it, so.
Well, I think it'll be important to, to get what information they have for that evening and, and then we'll take it from there. That's why I think it is very important. We'll do our side, the municipal side, and, and I think it'll be important to have that information reevaluated at this point in time.
Questions for the discussion? Moving on. Full business. The Attorney General, receipt of correspondence from the Attorney General's Office approving the, the warrant articles of the special town meeting of November 13th. The Attorney General's Office has approved Articles 2, 3, 7, 8, and 9 from the November 13th meeting. And they've, in their correspondence, they submitted their comments regarding Articles 2 and 8 and included the references to the, the state Commonwealth laws.
Just so you know, Mr. Chairman, I have forwarded this obviously to our town council. One of the things that the Attorney General's Office always does is look to articulate areas that they, they believe that they would like to make reference to in the way that they interpret the statute for the state versus what the bylaw is. And so what they do typically is try to explain to the community what they, they have to be mindful of. So even the article on firearms application fees revolving funds, you know, they talk about the fact that the community needs to, you know, with each year, you know, articulate the amount that it wants to put as a maximum for being able to withdraw for a revolving fund. And we know that already, but they put it in just so that the community knows. Same thing for the new article on the nuisance bylaw. It, once again, it tries to articulate areas where the community should be mindful and make sure that they adhere to not being in conflict with the state statute. So it's gone to our town council and if there's any remedy that needs to be done by a bylaw or, you know, by a regulation, the town council will most definitely tell us.
And Brian Mazer was copying at that.
Yes, yep. So it's good news that they, they've approved.
Thayer Street, Test Boring. Seeing that the fire chief is here. Could you give us a brief update for the boring on Thayer Street?
It was completed in one day.
It's completed in one day. Next question. That elevation from Mansfield to Thayer Street, 200 feet maybe?
Maybe.
Is that going to a pump house? If they put in a fire suppression system on Thayer Street, will the Mansfield facility be capable of handling that?
It will.
It will?
Because you have, you have to realize, we don't always use just a Mansfield pump. We use an engine to pump the water. So we hook up to the hydrant and we actually use an engine to the stronger pump than we have in the house to begin with. So we can pump 2,000 gallons per minute out of an engine or 1,000 gallons per minute out of the pump through hook-up engines. So that facility has the ability to hook an engine up to it and use the engine's pump rather than the old pump that's there. It would be a problem.
I know that our, an highway survey is not here for this evening and I know he's been busy through the weekend getting ready for Wednesday's storm. That's why I know the chief is, I can't believe we're talking snow again. It's just disheartening. But I was gonna say that, you know, the highway survey did say that they were very good at doing the borings and that there were some places where they encountered more ledge than where they thought they were going to and less ledge in other places. But I think that there will be, I would hope, reporting coming back from our highway survey about what may have, you know, transpired in terms of...
I believe overall they follow less ledge than what they anticipated.
Yeah, on the way up, yeah.
The entire row probably less.
Okay, all right.
So they, they believe their costs are gonna be much lower.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right. Well, there, see, I did not hear that part of it. That's why we had the chief here.
Well, I know the girls had to take a detour to school that day because the trucks were unloading, so I, I had firsthand experience that they were in town. So I'm glad to hear that they did the test because we weren't sure if that was ever gonna occur.
Very quick.
Good.
And the benefit of all of this is the potential for possible new growth.
And maybe a water system that comes a little bit further in, into the town, which would be a blessing in some ways. But I did wanna bring it before the board because we signed, you signed off on this back in April and there was a long stretch of nothing really happening. And I do know that the town planner had worked with the landowner to really go over steps that needed to be taken place.
I feel like we met with them in the old town hall.
Yes.
Like, I mean, this has been in the...
Oh, you mean way, way over.
The Longfellow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we met with them in the Longfellow.
Right.
So this has been a long time because they were trying to negotiate some alternatives at that time.
So here we are. We finally had that part of it done. And they do know the steps they have to take. And they have had some meetings, I know, with the planning department. So hopefully they'll go forward and they'll be able to give, you know, a better indication of what they're thinking. I mean, there was obviously a lot of disconnect initially between what the town planning department was looking to have and what I think that the owner was thinking. And it was very disconnected from what the fire chief was saying we needed as a requirement for any proposal, any development. So they've come a lot further along and I'm hoping that, you know, they'll continue to take the steps that we need to so that we can make it comply with the needs for public safety and also what we would be expecting for, you know, an overall site plan in, in the future of whatever kind of development could go there.
So with the, if this really does happen, if they, if they do have, you know, decide to build and go forward with this pipe, is that pipe gonna be enough volume that someday tap off and hit the school with it and get rid of this water tank we have?
Boy, reading my mind tonight.
You know what I mean?
It's, it's, yes.
Because down the road, it might be cheaper to tap off of that to the school than put in another water system at the school.
Right, we would even engineer to see how much water is pumped out of the truck legs.
Right.
See if we have an oppression in that.
Right, that's my...
Right. And I think right now we don't have the engineering plan in front of us and we just had them trying to look to come up with some kind of engineering plan. So I think at that point in time, when we get to see that, then we can start weighing in for what we think is gonna be, you know, important to not only that one development, but maybe potentially for extending a water main someplace else, you know.
We don't have a pressurized system right now, right?
Well, the system's technically always pressurized.
But we do lose some because the pump's not automatic.
So you open the hydrant and you lose it.
Because the pump's not automatic. Like, so to do the school, they might make us put a new system at Mansfield.
They could.
But in the end, it still would be cheap.
Could be.
Could be, we hope. But there is a lot of ledge on Bertha Lake.
There is.
So I'm just curious if the, if the pipe itself is big enough to accept the volume that we could give it.
I know you're thinking outside the box and if you ever go that way.
Yeah.
You know, you'd be, if you're gonna run a pipe from Thayer to the school and you wanna run a public water pipe from the Blackstone tank to the school to eliminate your well as well. You wanna eliminate your well in a public water if you work out the Blackstone.
Right.
Since you're gonna dig up the road, now's the time to do it, lay that pipe, if you're gonna try to accommodate.
Not just trying to look forward.
Yeah, that would be the ideal thing to do.
I mean, it could be 10, 20 years from now, but...
Into that, into that building, right off of the parade up. Think about the cost that we've endured over the years for that well.
Because the payment that we got back was...
If we would've had that forward 12 years ago.
Yeah.
I don't have any issues today.
Yeah, we had $600,000 in the bank.
That would've been enough to probably bring the water line to the school.
Yeah. And we spent it on repairs.
Repairments, which you're gonna spend again.
And then we gotta do it again.
That's right.
Sounds like a plan should be formulated.
Right, right on.
Right, well, at least we know that they, they'll come back with some kind of plan and then we'll take a much harder look at it. Before, it was just a hypothesis. Could it, maybe, yes, no? We just made it as a requirement that we weren't gonna allow any development there that didn't meet the public safety requirements of the chief. And so this was one of the ways to find out if we can do that. And if we can, obviously, we'll be looking at the plan to see, you know, exactly what Mr. Barrett has suggested and other people, you know, what other ways can we make this impactful in a positive way for the town in terms of our infrastructure because we know we need that going forward.
Thank you. Selecting this forum.
I just have one thing. It's Mr. Robinson, who is the community garden person. I've seen that he's been pretty active in posting that he's going to be getting a group, a meeting together soon. It's, he has it posted somewhere. I'll have to find out the exact date and we'll get it up on cable. But there's also a flyer in the hallway out here for people to take, you know, his phone number to contact him. So he'll be starting up the community garden again this summer. I volunteered a couple times last summer for him and I know he brought a lot of food down to the, I mean, it's truly a community garden. He brought it down to the, the St. Paul's Food Country. Anything that was left over, the abundance. So he, I know he's starting that up again. He's looking for help, physical and monetary and supplies. So, you know, look to social media, look to cable. I'll ask him to put it up on there and Tim can make a bulletin. And just here in our town, he has a flyer up there also, so. Spring is around the corner despite the snow coming in.
It is, it is. Hopefully it warms up and melts quickly.
You know, I, I just wanna clarify, some people called me over the last two weeks concerned that we voted to have a two and a half override.
Okay.
I explained to them, we voted to have a special town meeting to discuss an override.
Right.
So I just wanna make sure everybody's clear that this board can't vote to have an override. We can only vote to have a discussion to have an override. And then it has to go to a town election after the town meeting. So it's, no, don't get nervous, but come to the town meeting and let your, you know, let your thoughts be heard. Yeah.
Yeah, I think there was a few people who were confused as to how the process worked.
Because I, Chris, I was, "How did you vote for an override?" I said, "Well, we didn't." So, you know, and then once you explain it to them, then they relax a little, but I just want everybody...
That's good.
Because a lot of people get all nervous, but they don't ask questions. So I'm answering, hopefully answering a lot of questions right, right now, so.
Good, thank you for bringing that to our attention. It's true.
Selectment's forum is done. Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first on the, my report is about the open space recreation plan. We do have, and everybody out there in TV land can see, hopefully you got this in the mail, you should have, along with your excise taxes, Bill. Not one in the same, but this is a second phase of our open space recreation plan. The first one was one that did go out with our regular property tax bills, real estate tax bills. But that was a very brief offering, people an open narrative to just talk in general terms about open space. This is on our website and you can go directly onto the website to complete the survey. It's really like a quick 10 questions and it's very quick. I, I do think that if people take the time, we'll have a much better open space recreation plan. Again, this was a, another grant that we had received that allows us to, once we file it with the state, to have any number of grants available to us for conservation, recreation, park development, trail development, that right now we are blocked from being able to do with the exception that we've gotten this grant to actually formulate this. So we're working very closely with CMR PC. I asked the public to go on to www.surveymonkey.com backslash R backslash OSRP survey. And if you don't remember that, that's okay. Just go on the internet and go onto our town website and just click and you can do it that way. We do have, for anybody who doesn't have a computer, we do have hard copies here at the senior center and also tomorrow they're being delivered at the library because the library wasn't open today. But, so you can do it that way, too. But it's very important. There is some, you know, very specific things in there about where you recreate, the places we call recreation in this town or conservation in this town. And it's really important for us to get a feel for what, what people are doing. You know, are people just mainly on the bike path and that's what they call recreation? Or we have a lot more people using what we call, you know, only man-made trails by one or two people that are, you know, going up among the power lines or on land that is in an area that we have preserved, but we don't really have a formal trail for. And we just have some great things in there. The committees worked very hard to pool together their resources and to define certain places. And I think it, it will help set the goals for our open space recreation plan. And once we decide on those goals, which is gonna be in the month of April, we're going to actually have a community forum, which is gonna talk about the results of these surveys. That's April 12th. And after that, we will be, you know, putting together the input from the community forum along with the results of the survey and that will define our goals. And then from there, the rest of the plan falls into place very naturally. And, and I think we can have a really good, solid strategic plan because it's not meant to go on a shelf. It's actually meant to, to look at and say what lands are really important to us, what ones aren't anymore, why are we holding on to them?
Is that April 12th at 7:00?
Yes, yes. It will be April 12th at 7:00. And we are gonna put more emphasis on that as it gets closer, but the most important thing is if you can get this survey done before the end of March, we'd greatly appreciate it and we'd greatly appreciate hearing your voice on the matter. The second item on my town administrator update is the Attorney General's Abandoned Housing Initiative. As you know, your board was terrific in bringing out our A G counterpart with the programs that are trying to address blight in communities and also trying to address communities that have housing that is empty, which can then lead to increased blight. So the first thing we did, we did the demolition grant. And another phase of the Attorney General's Office program for the abandoned housing initiative relates directly to a receiver program. We're a very small community that is trying to really step up enforcement. I, you know, give lots of credit to our building commissioner departments, our border health, our stormwater. Everybody's working together for enforcement to make sure our bylaws are being followed. But we also have properties that no one knows if there's somebody even living in a building. It looks like it's been vacant for a long time. They don't know whether it's foreclosed or not. And we don't have endless resources monetarily, we know that as for a fact, to be spending even on the legal things, to find out is a house truly abandoned and can it, and can it be revitalized or can there be something of... it be revitalized, or can there be something of pressure we can put to make that house actually conform to sanitary code and inspeckional code so that somebody could move into the house or it can become habitable? So we do have a number of properties, believe it or not, in this town that are empty and vacant, and we did a site visit to a number of properties with the Attorney General's Office. They're doing an evaluation on some of those homes that are definitely, you know, good, solid potential for receiver program. And hopefully, we can do what some other communities have done, and that is to reduce the blight in the community and enhance the opportunity to have homes that are vacant right now become ones in which we have people living, paying taxes, and contributing to a more positive quality of life for the entire community. So you're gonna hear more about this as we go forward, but we visited a number of properties. I would say over half of them were empty homes, and then there were some that were what we think may be habitable or inhabited, but definitely in violation of a number of bylaws, especially sanitary code bylaws. So, so they help with that, and they actually assume a lot of the legal fees related to that. That's something we wouldn't be able to do. So a lot of the reasons why these houses stay the way they are is because we don't have that kind of cash to be able to put towards the problem to fix it. So I will update the board as we go forward on that. The next item on the town administrator update is National Grid. You have before you two things. One is, the vice chairwoman had mentioned about putting a street light out here. I want you to know that they have come out and investigated the pole right outside of the bottom of the driveway into town hall. They need to actually replace the pole and the transformer, but they're gonna put a light, and they're gonna put a very bright light, and hopefully that will resolve the problem. They were going to do it before we got the storm last week, and then because the wind was gonna be coming and they weren't, they were already relocating resources for the, for the, the actual nor'easter. So I got a feeling it's not gonna be this week either, because they're still...
Quite busy.
They're quite busy. But they will do it as soon as they can, and they have a, have given us a strong commitment to do that. The other thing I put in your packet was something that the director that I'm now in connection with, with National Grid, had showed us, that they have this system that has not actually been shared with us in the past, but now it is, where they actually will share where our power, power outages are. Now, this last storm, we were doing really great up until 12:56 in the morning, and I found out that Providence Street, Central Street, Quaker Street, you know, Albert Drive, and a whole number of streets had actually lost power. And now the National Grid actually sends, when, when you've lost power in town, tells you where, and actually will put down when the, the actual electricity goes back on. It went back on about 4:38 in the morning. And we haven't had that, so it actually is really good for emergency planning on the part of what your resources are. And so I told the chief that we'll be sharing this actively.
Can you put us who gets that email?
Well, right now, he has me on it, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, I didn't know how it was gonna work. So now that we know, yes, I would actually, would hope that they would also send it out to... Right here on the top, it did go to Steve Furno as our MEMA director, but I'd like it to also go to my chief here. Keep him in the loop. So I just thought that was interesting to share, that's something we haven't had. So I appreciate that. The next item in Central Street, again with National Grid, is to show you that with the last, recent pole relocation, we've moved on to also talking about easements. Our Highway Survey has been working quite diligently to actually be able to bring the number of easements to, as close to having been all signed off on as possible. So you'll see before you, there's at least three required grants of easements, and we're gonna be obtaining the final signatures on those, and some of them we may, I think one of them, the Highway Survey had told me, he believes he's already gotten signed off. But you can see with each one of these easements of being able to go on, it talks about where, where the existing poles are. Again, this has to do with your pole relocation. So it's another step in the process, which just tells you that spring is coming and, you know, this job will be being tackled in the not-so-distant future, and that is the Central Street Mass Works project. And the final thing that I have on my agenda was just to remind you about the draft of the master plan and the zoning diagnostic, which was yet again another grant for technical assistance to have both a final master plan submitted and to be used by the town for strategic planning going forward, and an evaluation of our actual bylaws and where they really made a lot of sense and where they might've had some disconnect, and that's the zoning diagnostic. So you have an open comment period, so if there's something that really is important to you, look at that big 186-page document, please, and give your opinions to CMRPC. And our next meeting is going to be March 19th, Monday, and that's all I have for you.
This is, this is the document we recruit to?
Yes, it is. How many sticky notes do you have?
I don't have any.
We'll be meeting, you and I, about that.
Okay, so we'll do signatures.
Oh, yeah, sorry. And I'll make those changes to the other pages.
I don't need anything. I have a little pen. I didn't wanna sign the minutes, so I stole yours.
I mean, just as it adds some identified places for parks of recreation, hopefully you captured them. If not, you know, let us know. Like Mansfield Pond, somebody told me about that.
I did not know.
Someone used to go skating.
The pond itself? I think the, the...
The town was, right?
No.
Could you go ice skating on that?
Kinda encompasses a pond.
Mansfield Pond, ice skating.
But the town always had the easement for the pumping station.
Fishing, yeah.
So the easement always, as kids, went to ice skating. And fishing, yeah.
I'll hear a motion to adjourn. Second rule.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.